I came from, I literally just came out of my car and it was air conditioned, so. And it just, I just, just, just got back from work, so. Uh, sorry. But it's cool back in the canyon, though. It's not like super hot like, like the rest of it was today.
All those trees help shade it.
Yes, exactly.
Okay, we're, oh yeah, now we're starting to see um. Some attendees uh pop up.
Right.
And one call in listener also, okay. I'll start just a few seconds when I. Clock strikes seven. Okay, I think this is good enough for government work. Okay, I'm going to call to order. The regularly scheduled meeting of the Larkspur Planning Commission for. This Tuesday, March twenty second, twenty twenty two. It is seven P M. Good evening, everybody, and thank you for being here. And could we start with the roll call?
Commissioner Swisfer.
Here.
Commissioner Kuntler.
Here.
Commissioner Tauber.
Here.
And Commissioner Wagsdaff.
Here.
And for the record, Natasha Chalmers is absent.
Okay. As it is our habit. We call for public comment on matters that are specifically not on the agenda. So if anyone wishes to address the, the commission on any such matters, now would be the time to do so. And if you wish to do so, if you could raise your hand. And I am not seeing anyone, so with that, we can go to our planning directors' report.
Evening Chair Kuntler, members of the commission, Dan Hordert. I just have a few things tonight. I want to mention the housing element website, livinginlarkspur.com. It's up and running. Feel free to go there and, and wander around. I think there's a plethora of information there. On the status and, and how we're going about. Drafting the, the housing element. And tomorrow night, there'll be a housing element workshop from six to eight. If you go on the Larkspur, livinginlarkspur.com website. There'll be links on there to, to the agenda, and on the agenda, there's a link to the Zoom. So we sent out. I think we sent out about six thousand mailers. To renters and, and property owners in the city of Larkspur. So hopefully we get a good turnout for that. And then last, the general plan updates coming along fine. The administrative draft D I R. Should be set to be released in the coming weeks. That's all I have. If you have any questions, I'm here to answer.
Okay, are there? Are there any questions for, for Dan? Okay, seeing none. We do not thank you. We do not have a consent calendar this evening, so we're going to go right into the public hearing items. And the first one is design review and floor area ratio exception. Twenty-one dash eleven for thirty-nine court of Toluca in Greenbrier. And if we could get the staff report, please.
Good evening Chair Kuntler and members of the commission. This is a request for permits. To allow substantial renovation of the house, including additions totaling. One thousand one hundred and eighty-nine square feet to the upper floors. And the conversion of seven hundred and forty-four square feet on the ground story. For an accessory dwelling unit on a seven thousand nine hundred and five square foot lot. The project is subject to design review to allow additions and exterior alterations and floor area ratio exception. To increase the existing two thousand eight hundred and sixty-eight square foot residence. With a point three six F A R to three thousand three hundred and forty-eight square feet. And a point four two F A R where two thousand six hundred and nine square feet. And a point three three F A R is permitted by code. These totals do not include the A D U as required by code. So as you recall, the planning commission first reviewed this project on January nineteenth. And after considering the staff report and public comments. The commission motioned. To allow continuance for design modifications to reduce the size of the house. And massing in order to be more compatible with residences in the surrounding neighborhood. So in response to the planning commission's direction, the applicant. Has made a number of changes to the design. First, the building height has been lowered. Ten and three quarter inches to twenty-seven feet and six inches. On the main floor, which is the first floor. The design of the floor has been reconfigured and reduces the floor area by forty-eight square feet. On the upper or second floor, it also has been reconfigured and the floor area actually increases seventy-five square feet. Originally, there was an entry tower. It was a two-story tower, and this has now been eliminated in the design. And the floor area has been reduced. By two hundred and thirty-two square feet. Now the front entry height, roof height has been reduced. By eight feet, two inches to eleven feet and six inches. The front entry has been pulled back. Six feet from the front exterior wall to create a small entry porch. The entry ceiling height has been reduced nine feet. The stairwell roof has been pulled back. And on the plans, you'll see an exterior A D U door and the accessible path to travel. From the driveway to the A D U. Story poles have been revised to reflect the revised design. The exterior finishes and colors remain the same as was previously proposed. The overall floor area is reduced by two hundred and five square feet. So the square footage, as I mentioned before, does not include the seven hundred and forty-four square foot two-bedroom A D U on the ground floor. The floor area does increase and is now a point five F A R. I'm sorry, point four two F A R where point three three F A R is permitted due to the slip of the lot. So in terms of design review, staff finds that the overall design and style of the proposed residence. Is generally compatible in style with the existing site and surrounding neighborhood. The subject site and surrounding properties. Are placed in a side-by-side configuration with primary windows and views towards the street and rear yards. With primary windows and then the secondary windows at the side elevations. The side yards on the site and adjacent properties are vegetated with plantings. Intended to screen views of each other, though are narrow at only six feet each. So staff finds that it appears that the proposed residence will not result in significant impact on light, air, or views of adjacent residences. The wood siding and general character appear to be relatively compatible. With other homes in the surrounding neighborhood. Which contain mostly horizontal lapboard siding, houses painted a range of earth tones. So based on the revised story polls. On the modified proposed design and project plans appear. To have massing of the front elevation combined with the reduction in overall building height. And eliminates the two-story entry tower and steps the entry back from the front of the house. Which is more compatible with the character of the neighborhood in general. And then lastly, as revised, the second story massing at the front of the house addresses and mitigates the amount of mass and bulk of the prior design. So proposed design would combine in attractive and visually cohesive manner, allowing the site to remain compatible with the surrounding neighborhood. In terms of the floor area ratio exception permit. Staff did prepare the survey of the neighborhood. For F A Rs within three hundred feet of the subject site. And the floor area ratios do range from point one five to point four five with an average of point three five. The square footages. Range from one thousand seven hundred thirty-one square feet. To four thousand five hundred and seven square feet with an average floor area of three thousand one hundred and nineteen square feet. As proposed, the revised. Point four two F A R would be above the average floor area ratio for this block according to Luca. And the second largest house on the block. And the third largest house on the entire survey, but on one of the smaller lots. The only residences that are larger are located on a twenty-five thousand square foot parcel. And an eighty-eight hundred square foot lot. The residential floor area ratio standards establish a floor area ratio for the R one zoning district. And allows, reduces the permitted point four oh F A R to point three three for a sloped parcel. Based on the average slope. However, the standards also allow for some minor exceptions. To the limit due to factors associated with the parcel, including a steep slope, small lot size. As long as you can make the findings for design review and F A R exception. Staff finds that the revised design with the elimination of the stair entry tower. Reduced building height, roof at stairwell pulled back, the recessed entry door. The reduced entry ceiling height and reduction of floor area results in a design which minimizes the perception of both. To offset the requested F A R exception. The proposed modification would result in a residence that does not overbuild a lot. And will be compatible with the overall neighborhood character. In terms of public comments, we only received one additional email. From a property owner at eighteen via Navarro, which expresses concerns related to impacts of views. I do want to mention that the revised plans were also sent to the Greenbrier Property Owners Association for their review and comment. And I've not received any new comments from them since the last meeting. So at this point, staff would recommend that the project is generally in conformance. With the findings required to approve a design review permit and floor area ratio exception permit. The commission should hear from the applicants and interested parties and determine whether the required findings. For approval can be made. I do want to mention that the project has been issued a one-time-only ninety-day extension pursuant to the Permanent Streamlining Act. And no more continuances may be granted. And that concludes my staff report.
Thank you. Thank you very much, Lorraine. Are there any questions for Lorraine from the commission?
Um, Lorraine, can you? So I know the, the entry was, the height was reduced, so that square footage was eliminated. But when I was adding it up, it looked like. That the real floor area hadn't changed other than the air. Floor area of the entry.
That's correct, and it's because it was double counted in the previous design, because the code requires. For that kind of volume to double count it. So what you're saying is accurate.
Okay, thank you.
Does anyone else have any questions for Lorraine? I've got, I have one question which relates to. Questions that Commissioner Talbert had at the, at the January nineteenth meeting, which had to do with the. With the interior access and, and the privacy. Of the, of the A D U. Have any modifications to the design been made in order to, you know, kind of. Bolster that separation between, between the home and, and the A D U?
No, the only. Change that was made was really to show the path to travel. To the A D U from the front of the house by the driveway to get around the house. Into the A D U, but the A D U itself has not been changed.
Yeah, and that, and there's no, there's no requirement for an A D U to actually have that. Kind of hard separation between the two, or let's say to, to, to inhibit. An interior access to the A D U. The code doesn't require that, does it?
It doesn't require that, but generally it's. Thought that, you know, there is general separation and the entry is really to be from the exterior.
Yeah, okay. All right, thank you.
Specifically states that the, it must be provided with an exterior entry. It doesn't say, but not an interior one.
Yeah, that's, that was my understanding. Okay, thank you very much. Hearing no more questions from the commission, I'm going to ask the applicant or the applicant's representative. Whether they wish to. Whether they wish to address the commission.
Mark Resnick, you can. Speak now?
Yes, Mark's hand. Yeah, you're on mute, so if you could take your.
Okay, am I unmuted now?
You are.
Okay, great, thank you. So thanks, everybody, for allowing us this second opportunity. Lorraine obviously covered everything in great detail, so. The only additional would be if you folks had any additional questions directly for. Us. Kim is on the phone as well. She's just out of town, so. I can answer any questions that you may have that Lorraine did not cover.
Okay, thank you. Do any of my fellow commissioners have questions for the applicant?
I'm, I'm. Actually, what, what was the, just bring me up to speed on what was the one letter about the, the view? I mean, is there much of an impact or who, who is the. Person who feels like they're being impacted from a view standpoint?
So it's the next door neighbor to the person that spoke last time, who's about eighteen hundred feet away. And they did submit some pictures that show that. You know, they still have a view, but off to the right where the large thirty-inch tree is already. That blocks it anyway.
Right.
I'll find it.
Yeah. Those are the pictures from.
There we go.
Yeah, there you go.
Okay, yeah, I see.
Okay, so could you? There we go.
Yeah, there, yeah. I mean, that's, that's fine. I'm, I'm, I'm good. I don't have any questions. Thanks.
Okay. Mr. Resnick, I, I don't recall if I asked this question last time. I don't see it in the minutes. But were you committed to putting solar panels on this home?
Yes, our desire is, as we go through this, that anything and everything that we can do to upgrade. Whether it be solar, you know, water capture, smart, you know, any of those types of things. That's something that we're hoping to accomplish.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, if there are no more questions, I will open it up to the public. This is a public meeting, so if. Anyone wishes to address the commission on this particular business item, now would be the time. If you could raise your hand. And I am seeing no raised hands, so with that, I will close the public hearing on this item and bring it back to the commission, and I'll start with Jeff.
So I think it's a handsome design. You know, walk down this, that. Or Toluca Street, and there are houses there that have been upgraded from the original houses that. I think ultimately, like a lot of places, like in Heather Gardens and other areas in Larkspur, that these houses are all going to be second stories at some point. And I have no objection to this design. I think it's nice, and I think the modifications that are made. Are in character, and it does decrease the, the massing that there was concern about. So I would be in favor of approving it.
Thank you. Thank you, Jeff. Commissioner Tower. You look like you weren't expecting that. Could you, are you muted?
Okay, I'm, I'm now unmuted.
There we go.
Um. Trying to decide how I feel. Um. I think.
You're going. You're muted again, Laura. There you go. No, you're still muted. There you go, you're on mute.
And having internet problems, so.
Okay.
Okay. What I said was. I, I think that the elimination of the tower really helps. With the massing and I, I, it's good that it reduces. You know, it's not double counting the floor area. And it reduced the, the height of it. I, I just. I still don't feel like my concerns. Are really still there, which is, I think it's just too much house for the lot. And I think by not counting the A D U. You know, the reality is that, that, that space is there and, and, you know, it is, it just, it, it, it makes it a really big house. So. You know, I think the design is nice, but I just, I guess, I still feel like it's, it's just, it's overbuilt.
Okay. More if you have nothing further, I'm moving on to.
Yeah, I think I'm done.
Okay, Brock, you're on.
Okay. So. By my calculations, at least, the, the actual floor area of the house hasn't really changed. In terms of usable floor area. What happened was they took, took the two-story, which was air, out of it. That does reduce the mass. My problem is that. If you go to the roof plan, can you do that? There. There's a lot going on up here that has nothing to do with the form that it's supporting. I, I want to pass this house, but. It, it could be done so much better, and I don't know. Quite what to do about it. You look at, I don't know if you can see the arrow I'm pointing, but this is sort of. A gable to a higher, to a lower gable that's sort of. Caught together, and these gables don't relate to anything even below. They don't come centered on a room. So. I'm ha, you know, basically the area hasn't changed from when we, we met before. A tiny bit. But I think they could do a lot more with this. So I'm not sure. Where I am. Like, like Laura.
Well, I, I think, you have anything further, Brock, before I chime in?
Yeah, that's, that's what I've got to say.
Yeah, I, I, I think I'm in vehement agreement with both. With you and Laura is that, you know, there, there are things about this that I like. Well, what I like is, you know, only partially relevant. Or which I think are in fact in compliance with the guidelines for design review, and certainly the. The improvement, the visual improvement of the, in the front of the house is. Does stand out. That's absolutely, that's absolutely true. There is a height reduction. And. But I, I, I too have a little bit of an issue with, with the size, with the size of the house. It is helpful. I do confess it is helpful that we have a commitment to. To solar panels because these large houses tend to be, you know, tend to be very, very energy intensive. And that, you know, having, having that generation does mitigate that. So that's definitely, that's definitely positive, the reduction of the height, the elimination of that. Of that large. Entry, entryway tower. All of that is helpful. But I suppose I'm not quite there yet with regard to the actual size of this house on, on this lot. So because there is a pretty large discrepancy between. Between the floor area ratio, which is proposed even without the A D U, and what is permissible by, by code. And, you know, as we say, I mean, the code is. You know, it's not gospel, but it does have, is intended to have some teeth. And. So I'm, you know, I'm, I'm a little bit on the fence, but I'm, I'm, I'm tilting toward asking for, you know, further modifications. So. With that. Now, as Lorraine pointed out. A continuance is not permitted at this point. So. If we are not to approve this, we have to, we could do a denial without prejudice, which would then allow the applicant to. To launch an appeal with the city council. Which I think might be the, the fairest and most constructive route. So perhaps someone would like to prepare a motion to that effect.
I should say you do have one other option, and that would be to approve the application. Subject to a condition to modify the design further. And then with that condition. The, the revised design would probably have to come back for staff level approval.
That could only work if it's a minor modification, though. Significant changes.
This might be, I think what we might be asking here is a bridge too far to allow, allow that. So if somebody would care to formulate. To formulate a motion.
Would anyone like to allow Mr. Resnick to speak first?
Oh, is his hand raised?
Yeah.
Sorry, my apologies. Yes, please.
Okay, thank you. So I just need a little bit of clarification, if you'll indulge me. So we had a meeting in January. There were a number of issues. We. Produced the document, item by item, as to how we address those issues. Staff is making a recommendation that those changes and revisions now conform. There are actually four other homes on the street that have a forty-two four or greater currently. We did everything we could to mitigate the massing as requested. And the bulk of the house is down below, and so now we have one commissioner that. Has stated, likes the design, it's consistent with everything else, and we have, you know, other commissioners that are basically saying the same thing that they said back in January. Before we made all the changes, so I'm. I'm pretty confused, and if you guys could help me understand this process, because it's been lengthy, expensive. And it's quite frustrating, I'd be very grateful.
And I understand, I mean, and, and, and these, these deliberations are not intended to be, to be punitive in any way. And, you know, we would like to, we would like to find a way to get to yes. I mean, that's what, you know, that's what our, that's what our function is. But there are two separate issues here. One is the, the visuals of the design and, and I think we're all, you know, in agreement that. That it's, it is, you know, it is. Compliant from a visual standpoint, from a stylistic standpoint. But then the other item, of course, is the floor area ratio, and whether or not in the, in the assessment of the commission. The, the house does still overbuild the lot. And we might be getting, you know, fairly close to something which my fellow commissioners would deem acceptable. But I guess our view is that we're just not quite there yet.
Okay, so the fact that there's, sorry, go ahead, sir.
I, I think you've done a good job at putting work into it. I can see why the other commissioners think that it's. It's overbuilt for the lot, but again, as, as I was walking around the neighborhood, I did see several other houses which. Were similar size, and again, I do think that ultimately, a lot of the houses there are going to be like that. I, I think one of the problems is, is the adjacent houses next to you. Are small, and so this house is going to look, look large compared to it. There are, there's a house in, in Larkspur. Which has this issue that, you know, was approved years ago. That's near, you know, Pico on the backside there. Dan, you know which one I'm talking about?
Yeah.
I'm on a Vista.
Yeah, yeah, one of us, and so, you know, I mean, one of the problems with that. Is that it might take some time for the other houses to catch up and do that. But it's, again, you put time, you put money into it, you did follow the, the recommendations from the nineteen, or with nineteenth to the eighteen. And, you know, I commend you for that, and so I'm, that's why I disagree with the other commissioners, but that's fine, that's what we do.
Yeah, I appreciate that. There are four other homes on the street that have a forty-two four or greater. And so the request to make additional changes then requires. Changing story poles again, which we already have ten thousand dollars into story poles. You know, sixty-five quarter Toluca, which is three houses down. Was recently approved. It's at a forty-two four, and their construction's almost done. Other folks on the street we've spoken to that are in the process of meeting with architects and discussing. Adding additional space. The house immediately next door, forty-three. Adding additional space, the house immediately next door, forty-three, is a two-story as well already, you just don't see it because it's in the back. Um, so I very much appreciate, um, you know, Commissioner Swisher's, um. Perception and, and comments and the fact that he walked the street and. Um, but again, it, it may not be meant to be punitive, but it's very frustrating, it's very expensive. Um, and I, I think, we think that, you know, we went back and did what we were asked to do. The staff is now recommending. Um, that it be approved based on what we've done. Um, and now we're sitting here in a call and, and folks are saying, it's not enough, it's too big, it's this, it's that, so. It, it, it's frustrating and unfair and very expensive to keep going through this.
Yeah, and I can, I, I, I can definitely understand that, that viewpoint, and, and certainly it's not our goal to, uh, to impose, uh. Uh, unnecessary expenses on you, but, you know, we have a responsibility toward the. Toward the community, which we're trying to, which we're trying to fulfill to the best of our, to the best of our ability, um.
Right, and that's what you shared with us at the last meeting, and we went back and revised all those. Requests to the point where staff is now recommending that it be approved, but yet, uh, four, three of the four commissioners are saying, that's not enough. Well. I, I don't understand, if staff recommends it's approved, we went back, we'd made all the changes that were requested. Put everything in, we have a commissioner who sees that, but we have three that don't, so.
I think I should interject here, because we don't need to have an argument in this format. Um, first off, staff just makes the best recommendation we can based on the changes and the information that the commission provided, and what's apparent here is that. That the changes are not significant enough to meet what they really were trying to get with their direction. And they don't believe they can make the findings for approval based on the F A R, which is a bulk and mass issue as well. So.
Okay, but we have four other houses on the street that have the same F A R, and that's why I'm not following, Kristen.
Yeah, but that, that's not really the yardstick. Um, you know, we look at each, uh, each application, uh, on its, uh. On its own merits, I mean, that data is, uh, does provide, you know, guidance to, uh, you know, to us, but, um, it's not. It's not a line of the sand saying, well, you know, here, there's another F A R forty-two, point four-two in the neighborhood, so, um. As a result, all, um, all houses with a point forty-two, point four-two comply. That's not quite how it works, but again, I, I, I don't really want to. Uh, you know, burden everybody with, uh, with, uh, you know, with, with an argument, and again, I definitely sympathize with, uh. With the, with the added expense, added expense, uh, I do recall that at the last meeting, um. Uh, it was deemed that the, the house was, uh, excessive in, in size and, um, what appears to have, uh, happened is that. The reduction in F A, or the, the reduction in the, um, in the calculated, um, floor area, um. Is really completely attributable to the elimination of the, of the entry tower, um. More than, uh, you know, more than anything else. Um, I, I wonder if I could impose on Commissioner Wagstaff, uh, um. You made a couple of comments about, when you were looking at the roof design. About how there wasn't really a whole much go, going on underneath some of that, uh, that which would. Which would signal that there was some kind of room in order to, you know, to, to actually reduce the, uh, the square footage of the house.
I'm, uh, this, this is difficult, because I've been here before many times and, uh, and you, uh. You're trying to, um, do what your client wants and provide them with what they need. And at the same time, um. There's an opportunity to really produce something that's, that's, uh, a, a little more s- special, and I think they're so close. Um, it wouldn't take a lot to get there, but, but if you look at the rooms, for instance, upstairs, those are big rooms, and. There really wasn't, uh. That it's a point four-two F A R where there's, it's really required to be what, point three-six or something?
Three-three, right?
Three-three. And, and that doesn't include the A D U, which in fact increases it to point five something, so. Um, I've always thought, honestly, that all the houses, uh, whether they're hillside or not, should be point four, that's, that's never been changed, so. So I'm trying, I would like to give them the benefit of the doubt, but. Um, you know, for me, form follows function, and if you look at the floor plans relative to the roof plans. Those forms don't follow that function, and. They could do better, is it okay? I guess it's okay, you know, it's. I, I wish it were easier. I wanna, I wanna approve them, but. They're really trying to hang on to all the square footage that they had the first time we saw this, and. I don't know, you know?
Yeah, that, that apparently doesn't happen, so I think we do need to, to move on, uh, I will, and I'll repeat it again, um. You know, before we, you know, close this particular, uh, business item, uh, is, yeah, we. Uh, uh, should we go ahead and have a, pass a motion to, to deny without prejudice, um, you may appeal this to the, uh, to the city council. Um, within, within ten days, uh, that's why there is a, uh, an appeal procedure. So with that, I'm gonna go back to requesting that one of my commissioners, it's gonna be either Laura or Brock, um. Uh, formulate a, you know, formulate, um, a motion.
I will move to deny without prejudice, uh, design review, four year ratio, twenty-one dash eleven for thirty-nine quarter to Luca. Um. Do I need to specify more?
I don't think so, because the conditions of approval would not apply.
Good.
Uh, which, and we need to continue this application to the next. Available planning commission hearing or adoption of findings.
I didn't, oh.
Oh, right, yes, that's correct, yeah. Okay, um, could I get a second?
I will second it.
So all in favor of the motion as formulated, please say aye.
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 We need a roll call.
Uh, we will get a roll call in a second, um, all opposed?
Opposed.
And one opposed, and could we get a roll call, please?
Commissioner Kuntzler?
Um, aye.
Commissioner Wagstaff?
Aye.
Commissioner Tauber?
Aye.
Commissioner Swisher?
Nay.
And.
For the record, that's.
That Commissioner Chalmers is, uh, is absent this evening. Um, okay, and then to repeat again, um, there, um. This application, this motion is, um. Uh, eligible for appeal to the city council within ten days.
That would be ten days of final action, which needs to be the adoption of your, well, you've acted on this, but you haven't adopted the findings. So they can have ten days from the day you adopt the findings of denial.
Would be after the next meeting.
Kristen, just, just out of curiosity, I'm, I'm gonna be in the UK, uh, at the next meeting, um. Does that? Uh, is that a, is that a problem?
For adoption of the findings?
Yeah.
Uh, no, cause. Commissioner Swisher, although he voted against it, could agree that the findings are based on your decision. And Commissioner Chalmers can read the record and also vote on it.
Okay.
Okay.
Watch the record, I should say.
Okay, thank you very much. Okay, with that. Um. We are going to move on to the, um. Next item on our agenda. Which is, let me see if I got all the. All the initials correctly, incorrect here, um. Heritage that believes a territory removal design review, uh, variance and, uh, exception. And the H is, I'm sorry, why am I drawing a blank on the H?
Historic review.
Historic, of course, historical review, uh, for. Um, nine Murray Lane, and that's application twenty-one dash thirty-five, and, um, I think we can start with the staff report.
Okay, well, I am gonna be brief, because I know for certain that all of you read that voluminous staff report I gave you. And all of its information, so. Yeah, briefly, the applicants proposed to extensively remodel and expand an existing twenty-three hundred and sixty-one square foot historic home. By adding two thousand nine hundred and thirteen square feet of additions to the rear and westerly side of the residence. Plans also include demolition of an existing historic cottage. To mitigate the loss of the cottage, and it's important to the history of the site, they have, the applicants agreed to reuse the front siding, windows and door. On the west. Side here of the carport to kind of maintain that perception of having a, a, a little historic rental cottage, which was part of the history of this area. The applicants, um. Oops, they've also agreed to repitch the roof on the carport, so it looks more like a cottage and less like so, like a flat carport, um. As a. As this requirement essentially encloses the carport, the applicant has revised the design to include this revision in, um. Proposes full enclosure in a, in a single car garage at this point with doors. The total combined square footage of all existing and proposed additions would be five thousand six hundred and sixty-six square feet with a three-six F A R or a point four O is permitted by code. Additional site improvements include grading and retaining walls in the front yard to create a circular driveway. Uh, grading and low retaining walls and to level much of the rear yard, construction of rear yard pool and bochi court. And a trellis, a, um, hot tub, patio and landscaping. This historic home at nine Murray Lane, as long as well as five Murray Lane, were both built by William Murray, uh, circa eighteen eighty-two and on. Um, the, in the early two thousands, the home at nine Murray Lane was reevaluated and given a score of a hundred and five points on the N R H P. Rating system and an A for the local inventory. Staff has attached a wealth of information, uh, including historic reviews on this, um. And the evaluations by the historic architect during the, um, preliminary review of the project. Trying to bring it into conformance with the Secretary of the Interior Standards. We then followed up with two public hearings before the Heritage Preservation Board on February tenth and February twenty-eighth. At that time, the board, after some revision to the design, um, and rethinking of the use of the cottage siding. Made a motion to approve this, subject to four slight modifications. That the roofline over the exercise room, which would be the front entry area of the new addition, the new wing here, be lowered. Uh, a slight adjustment in the placement of the cottage siding, which was originally centered, and now it's been shifted forward. Um, modification to the roofline of the carport and preservation of the short door on the west elevation, there's a small door right here, because there used to be a porch at this location. The Heritage Board agreed to the removal of the porch roof and porch deck. Based on the board's motion and revised plans, these plans now incorporate the changes the board had recommended. Uh, it's recommended the proposed additions are appropriate and compatible with the historic resource that the design provides for appropriate rehabilitation of the original structure. And it meets the Secretary of the Interior standards. With regard to design review, staff has provided you with a detailed run-through of the findings in the report, but generally, we. Determined that the additions are well-placed to preserve the historic character of the original building. Will not signi- be a result in a significant impact on light year or views for surrounding property owners, and that it will be compatible with the neighborhood. With regard to the variance, there are two issues, uh, at hand here. First, that the carport is located within the required side yard setback. And that the width of the carport space is only eleven feet, where twelve feet's required for a confined parking space. The applicants requested the variances so they can retain the parking at this location. Um, in large part due to the fact that there is a. Quite large heritage tree located immediately adjacent, so they can't widen the space, and you can't go closer to the side yard setback. Uh, staff has supported this, and so has the Heritage Board, um, largely because trying to relocate a covered parking space to another location. Would run afoul of trees located in the front yard. We have a variety of mature coast red, coast. Redwoods and coast live oaks located in the front yard. And it's very difficult to find a location that could provide for a carport or a garage. In the front yard without requiring a front yard setback instead. And the additional issue would be that if you placed a two-car garage or a single-car garage out in front of this historic home, we would then block views of this historic home and run afoul of our historic preservation program. So, based on these sort of unique circumstances for this property, we have provided you with variance findings to maintain the structure in its current location. There will not be any health or safety issues to the best of my ability to provide for. Regard, with regard to this, even though it's a little too close to the side yard, all the exterior materials, with the exception of the historic siding on the west side, will be fully compliant. There will be no openings on the east side or west side of the, uh, structure to allow fire to travel through, and the structure will have to be sprinkled per the fire department. So this brings me to the heritage tree removal permit, which was the only area that I had any issues with this particular project. Um, they have requested. The removal of trees number thirteen and fourteen, which are located right in here, directly in front of the new addition. And the tree removal is partly to facilitate the addition and partly, in my mind, to protect the longevity of the historic home, as they're quite close to it. And could create some issue with dropping limbs or, um, fire hazard with their proximity. In addition, with regard to historic preservation, the removal of the trees facilitates an addition in one of the more appropriate locations that still allows us to preserve the historic elevations in their full glory. Invisible from the roadway. The only issue I did raise in the staff report at this point is the circular garage and its impacts potentially on the trees that are located all along this front yard area. The width of the circular garage and its design comes quite close to all of the trunks of these trees. And leaves them in a very small island, um, to survive in, and it doesn't really provide in some cases for much room for the. Future growth of these trees. And the impacts that could be created in the critical root zone due to the compaction and the, and the work involved in trying to prepare for a vehicle driveway. The Orbus Report has stated that this kind of activity removes the ability for the roots to get air, uh, nutrients, and, and the compaction can damage them. So we have recommended that the driveway design be rethought to narrow it quite a bit. To allow a car to travel through, but to keep a larger area of, uh, earth. And non, non-impacted earth in particular, around the base of these trees to ensure their survival in the long run, and that they won't in, um. Undermine the driveway itself in the long term. So with that, I have recommended approval. Subject to the findings and conditions in the staff report, and with the, um. Recommendation that the circular driveway be modified to better protect the trees.
Uh, eh, um. Kristin, did you, did you formulate that as a condition of approval, the?
I did not, because I'm leaving it to the commission to determine if this is necessary.
Okay, thank you. Um. Is that all, Kristen?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Uh, are there questions for Kristen? I'm seeing none. I, I, I've got. I'm sorry, Laura, did?
Yeah, I, I have a brief question.
Please.
Um, and I did read all of the voluminous, uh, write-up.
Be a quiz in the morning.
Yeah, exactly. I just wondered about the, the recommendation on the driveway, um. If it is, so what I'm imagining you wanted to do is to make the island in the middle bigger. And, uh, um, so that the paving isn't as close to the trunks and the roots.
Yes.
Think is what you meant.
Yeah.
Um, and I guess the question I had was, um. Does that leave them enough space? Uh, and in the, the paved part to have the car circulation they're looking for.
Uh, well. If somebody's trying to create a new driveway today, the widest it has to be is twelve feet for just private access, if it's a single car, single lane. I- in a car can travel through on a driveway that's as little as eight or nine feet wide comfortably if you aren't. You know, threading the needle between buildings or something. So it is possible to narrow it. And to still have a functional driveway. It isn't, the driveway itself isn't necessary for meeting the onsite parking requirements, it's really a, a, a designed, you know, a desire. Functionality for, by the property owners and, and the architects, so I'm sure they can speak to this a little better and.
Yeah.
Sure they have a, a differing of a pin, opinion on this than me, so.
Thank you.
Um.
Oh, sorry.
Yeah, go ahead, Rock.
Um, where is the parking? I mean, I see the carport, but it's not.
Um, where is the parking? I mean, I see the carport, but it's not gonna park a car, or is it?
Well, technically, they want that to be their covered parking, to meet their covered parking requirement. And if we approve the variance for the width being eleven feet, that is a parking space. That's a required space, I guess, would be here. You can have another required space right here. You can have a guest space anyplace on the driveway, and there's four spaces.
So can you tell me how wide that is, that, that?
It's twenty feet wide from here to here.
Okay, so.
They're showing you parking spaces here, if it's the idea that they would go around and drive around it.
That's what I thought I was looking at, but I wanted to be sure. Okay, thank you.
Uh, Jeff, do you have any questions?
When you said, uh, when you said garage, circular garage, I think you meant circular driveway initially, right?
I did mean circular driveway, did I say garage?
So I, I guess I had a question about that is, um, has any um methods been explored in which that driveway could be made of porous materials? It, so that the, the roots of the trees, those redwood trees there, uh, because this, this place is, it's a beautiful area, you know, with, with the trees there and everything, and it really would hurt the character of the um of this house and, and that area if those trees were damaged, it would significantly impact it. So I think I agree, that's a really major concern.
I think the applicant's proposed pavers, um which likely will let some water through. It's the compaction of earth that really does most of the damage. It's substantially the ability of water to travel through.
Right, there's other, I think, I think, because I think we dealt with this uh years ago when we did our remodel and there, I know there are ways that you can minimize impaction and increase percolation. Maybe Brock, you know, Brock probably knows that much more than I do. Um, so I just was curious about that, because I mean, I, I think it's reasonable then to, to uh narrow that driveway to increase it, the bigger island for those trees, but that, that would be my main concern.
Okay, well, we, well, you collaborate on that when we get back to.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Um, I just wonder, so i- in the um, uh, Kristen, in the um, the, the pool, the terrace and the pooled area and then um, I was gonna, this is the side of the house, on the back of the house. Uh, so I see there's a slot drain uh which they've provided. Um, and I was just wondering, I can, I can ask the applicant this question as well. Would um, would there be a benefit to um, to having those, you know, those pavers or whatever surface that is be uh at least semi-pervious and not impervious? Um, in terms of just the, the geological stability of the area?
Uh, I have not asked that question. It wasn't determined to be an issue for complying with stormwater runoff or anything, so.
Yeah, I'm just wondering if there would be an additional benefit to having that, but I'll, I'll ask the applicant. Okay, if there are no further questions, I will um uh ask the applicant or the applicant's representative if they would uh care to make a presentation. And I see a hand raised.
I don't see a hand, where?
I do, Jared.
Oh, there we go.
Jared Polsky, who is the architect.
Okay, Jared, you've been allowed to talk. Do what you, but I didn't let the other people speak, so I'll treat everyone the same.
Can, can you hear me?
Yeah.
Okay, great, thank you. Uh, good evening. Uh, we are Wayne and Amy Wu's architects. Uh, I'm here in my office with Amy and Tyler Shelton, my associate, and Wayne's online from, in Florida. And we're also here with Ken Downs, uh, our attorney, should any legal questions arise. Um, uh, just a quick note, I've had my architecture office here in Larkspur for forty years. In, in fact, we worked on the other two houses on Murray Lane, the Solters' house at one Murray Lane and the Kirschbaum's house next door at five Murray Lane, also an historic house. And uh they are hopefully online and supportive of this project. Uh, first off, I want to thank Kristin for a very thorough report. It has indeed been a very long process. We applied for the historic review last August and we were finally, as Christian mentioned, received the historic board's approval at the end of February. Um, the house at nine Murray was one of the first houses in Larkspur and it absolutely must be saved. Yet it really presents a design challenge. Uh, clearly the house is historic, but it's in very poor condition. Model will be very costly, so frankly, it has to end up as a desirable, up-to-date family home to warrant the expense. We worked very hard on a design that would meet Larkspur's historic consultants' approval while avoiding any variances. Except for the garage, as Kristen mentioned, this design meets all the setback requirements, the F A R, the lot coverage and the height of it. At request of staff and for historic preservation reasons, as described by staff, the only variance we were requesting is rebuilding the garage on the west side of the site. Clearly, there's no garage options and other options, and Miss Holon, the historic consultant, was actually quite pleased with the removal of the rear cottage facade and its placement on the east side of the garage, because you really see that side from the road. There are large trees to be saved scattered above the site. In fact, we actually started the design process with a phone call from our consulting arborist, Dr. Kent Julen. And as the project recor- progressed and at the request of staff, we actually redesigned the driveway last December with Jo- Dr. Julen's help to make sure the driveway would not negatively impact the roots of the heritage trees. There's no place to park on the roadway, it's a private roadway. And uh, we've, w- w- at Mr. Julen's uh con- consultation, uh, he feels that this, the pavers as design would not negatively impact the roots of the trees. Uh, we also worked long and hard with our landscape architect, Brad Ixey of Imprintz, to place the pool and the outdoor amenities. And we worked very hard with Glenn Durth, our civil engineer, to design the drainage. And Glenn is actually available tonight, if anybody has some drainage questions uh to, uh, he's available tonight to, to chime in. The site has, definitely has challenges, but with a careful and thoughtful approach to design, working with historical consultants, the Arbers, the Landscape Architect, the Civil Engineer and with staff, uh, we believe the house at nine Murray Lane will be a real credit to Larkspur preserving its heritage. I know that Wayne and Amy, and I can make a few comments. Uh, we also expect a number of neighbors who may want to comment on this application and I'm happy to answer any questions you might have.
Okay, thank you.
Jared, I had your presentation. Did you want me to show it?
No, I think you're, you know, you're showing that, uh, uh, well, you can go through it if you want. I think everybody's seen the, the drawings.
Okay. Oh, it's the same, all right.
I, I would go to the three D, the last few three Ds at the end, particularly the one at the back. It might just be.
Oh, that.
Give a sense of the, of the space.
Oh yeah, that's a, that's a good visual. Um, thank you, Jared. Before we move on to um others who care to speak on this application, I'm gonna see if there are any questions for uh, for Mr. Polsky.
Um, I have a question, or actually just a observation. I, Jared, um I, I went by there today. I actually, years ago, was involved with somebody who was thinking about doing something there and um evidently decided not to, but how, what, how involved is it to save what's there in terms of, you know, it, it looks like there's a, a ton of work to be done um just to pull the original house back up.
Brock, you're absolutely correct. The house, you know, there's, there's two parts to this house. There's the, the part that actually faces Magnolia, the uh, the two-story part with the one-story addition, the part, oh, oh, go back to that last slide there. The part on the left side of the, of the, uh, of the floor plan. That part needs everything, but is in fairly reasonable shape. The, the wing that sticks out towards the west not only needs everything, but is in horrendous shape. And um, we would have preferred not to save that portion of the house, but that was not in the cards. So yes, indeed, it's going to be a monumental task to save that part of the house. We can do it.
I totally believe it.
Hi, can I um interject? My name is Amy Wu. I am uh one of the applicants and like uh Jared mentioned, my husband Wayne is joining us virtually from Orlando, Florida. And so I just wanted to take a quick opportunity just to thank all of you for being here. Thank the city and especially Kristen for her support in getting us through the Heritage Planning Committee. As everybody has stated, it has been a long process. We have meticulously worked on this house. It is our goal and purpose to save this house. As people have mentioned, that this house is very uh key to Larkspur's history and it is in poor condition. And without us being able to move on it and to get into it, every day that goes by, this house is get further risk of natural disasters, fire, what have you. Um, so we're very much looking forward to taking on this project and moving it forward and moving into our new home in Larkspur at some point. Um, we do have several neighbors who are here in support and we look forward to them sharing their opinions. Um, but, and we are, I am also happy to answer any questions that anybody has, but I just first and foremost wanted to ensure that everybody is uh aware of how appreciative we are of all of your time and attention to this project and that we are looking forward to restoring this property to the glory that it once had.
Okay, uh, thank you. We definitely do want to hear for, uh, from whoever does care to speak. Um, I've got, uh, I have a, uh, I've got a couple of questions if I, uh, if I may. I mean, I, I'll re pose the other question about the uh, uh, the kind of surface that you're proposing for the, the pool area, whether, you know, I understand that, that the, the slot drain would be, uh, would be uh adequate, but uh sort of a uh, if I were to take a belt and suspenders approach, would, would the, would the site benefit from having a surface there which was at least partially permeable?
Around the pool?
Yeah.
Um, we could uh propose that question to our landscape architect.
Yeah, just, it's just really food for thought. Uh, the, the other thing, Jared, um you know, the, the, the green, the green building directive um does specify that, you know, project design will preferably include features as foster renewable energy. Um, and I was wondering what your commitment is to um, to solar panels.
Absolutely committed to solar panels. We, we didn't show them because we sort of take it as a given almost. Uh, we have solar panels on all of the projects that we do and everybody wants them. They make sense. So there certainly would be solar panels on the, on the south-facing roof edge, you can see on the right-hand side. Uh, and maybe even on the, in the middle. We, we certainly want to have solar panels on that.
Okay, okay. Thank you, thank you very much. Um, okay, with that, if no further questions for for either Jared and Miss Wu, I'm gonna invite uh anyone else who wishes to speak. I see um, Ms. Salter's hand raised. So if you would care to address the commission?
Um, Ms. Salter, I, I think you need to unmute yourself.
Or, I, I, I see her, I see the hand has been taken down.
Okay, so we'll go to Andrew Tang.
Oh no, actually, actually her, actually this hand, her hand is back up again. So Ms. Salter, if you're, if you could unmute yourself and, and speak, that would be great.
Hi, how are you? Uh, this is actually Mr. Salter. Can you guys hear me okay?
Um, yes, we can, thank you.
So my wife's actually next to me. Uh, on, on behalf of uh one Murray Lane and five Murray Lane, uh, the Kirschbaums and the Salters, we want to thank the commission. Uh, we have been on numerous phone calls, both on the heritage side and now with the planning commission, and we thank everybody. Uh, we thank Kristin, she's done a tremendous job on this house. And uh, we really want to thank the Wu's. Uh, we have, we've known a fair amount of people that have been interested in this property over the last four to five years. It's a very difficult task and they have stepped up and are going to beautify the street, the neighborhood, and we are so excited for this project to get passed. Uh, I have spoken to the neighbors up above on Park Lane. Uh, we've spoke to uh the neighbors off of Murray Lane and everybody thinks this design is incredible. And uh, we were looking in, uh, or to even trying to purchase this house and it was such a difficult task. And uh, they've stepped up, they're great people and uh, I hope this is a resounding yes on uh, on the planning commission's behalf, because the neighborhood really wants it and uh, it's gonna be great. So I just want to thank everybody for your time and uh, if there are any other questions, we are the neighbors, but we really appreciate everybody. Thank you.
Thank you, thank you very much. Um, uh, Andrew Tang, I see your hand is raised, if you'd care to speak.
Yes, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, so I am the neighbor um across Murray Lane. I live at thirty-three uh Rancheria Road. Uh, we have been in our current residence for uh just over, uh, ju- around ten years. Um, and I would echo everything uh that Mr. Salter has said about uh the Wu's really taking on a project for um, a site that uh needs to be saved, but, but is, is quite a undertaking um in order to do this. Um, as you may know, the previous owners had, had uh, had the vision that they were going to do this, but the requirements because of the historical uh preservation requirements, I think, were, were too uh, made, made the project just too large for them to, for them to contemplate. So um, I am in strong agreement that I think that this is a, a very good move um for the community and, and I'm looking forward to um seeing this project hopefully come to fruition.
Thank you very much. Um, I see a hand raised, uh, Amara Morrison.
Hang on, let me get there. Allowed to talk, Amara Morrison.
There we go.
All right, good evening, members of the commission and uh Chair, I'm sorry, just sorry. Um, just one second here while I orient myself. Um, yeah, my name is Amara Morrison and I'm an attorney with the law firm of Wendell Rosen. Uh, we represent Laura DeTels, who resides at thirty-nine Rancheria Road, just to the south of, of the subject property and appreciate Mr. Salter um indicating that he's uh representing the neighborhood, but um actually my client has, has a different perspective on the project. Um, we've previously appeared on behalf of our client before the Heritage Preservation Board uh at both the February tenth and February twenty-eighth meetings. Uh, and we've also provided correspondence to the city through the Heritage Preservation Board regarding our concerns about the project. And while there have been modifications and improvements which have been made to the Wu's design as a result of our comments and as a result of direction provided by the Heritage Preservation Board, we continue to remain concerned about the following, you know, primarily as they relate to nine Murray Lane's status as a historic resource. Um, and as um Ms. Tyke pointed out, the nine Murray Lane does carry an A rating in Larkspur's uh rating schedule. So our concerns are the following. Um, number one, we do remain deeply troubled over the demolition of the cottage, which is also historic and does contribute to the historic designation of the property and up until recently was utilized as, as a rental. Um, we just feel that more can be done to protect and preserve this component of the, of the property, the historic nature of the, of the property. And number two, we have concerns which are related to the requested variance, um which is required for the carport in order for it to remain in its current location. Uh, if, if the unpermitted carport currently fails to meet California Building Code requirements and is located within an area that is considered a high fire severity zone, then the proximity of the carport to the property line would also increase concerns related to fire exposure and the spread of fire by, by indirect frame, uh flame or radiated heat. Um, and if the variance is going to be granted, we would require a, or we would request a specific condition of approval that requires the construction materials um be required as required by the California Building Code and that, 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 those construction uh material requirements be included as a part of the project approval. And number three, we're concerned about the proposed removal of heritage tree number twelve uh due to the encroachment of an expanded storage area to the rear of the carport and due to the encroachment of the proposed bocce court. Frankly, to allow the removal of this tree is, is really in essence allowing a bocce court to take precedence over a heritage tree. That also contributes to the historic characteristic of this property. The, the removal of tree number twelve, which we noted was not mentioned during staff report, uh, is going to have a direct impact on our client's privacy as it will remove existing screening between the proposed addition and our client's um master bedroom. And so we would request that this part of the tree removal uh permit be denied. And we also do concur with Ms. Tyke's concerns about the impact to the heritage trees related to the circular driveway and are most concerned about trees number one, two, four and five, and really their long-term health, given the extent of the drip line. Finally, as we've pointed out to the city in our previous correspondence, our client owns fee title to Murray Lane. The, the Wu's do not have a recorded easement to access the property um and to use Murray Lane, and so we are going to continue to raise this as an issue for cons- and to use Murray Lane, and so we are going to continue to raise this as an issue for consideration as a condition of approval. And on a related access point, our, our client does have a recorded easement to cross the northwest corner of the Woo's property. There, our, our client's fence has two gates that open onto the top corner of the Woo's driveway along the fence line and our review of the plans does not reflect that, that those plans show that easement. So we, we just want to bring the planning commission's attention to that issue as well. And with that, I thank you for your attention this evening.
Thank you very much. I am going before, I, I see Jared's hand is raised. I see two other hands raised. So before I come back to, to Jared, maybe I could hear from the other members of the public. So could I begin with, I don't have a name, but is the, it is the, the telephone number nine two four one four zero two. If you could identify yourself, tell us where you live and, and then speak.
James Holmes, Larkspur. I, this project has much to commend it. But if indeed it is true that the, that Heritage Tree number twelve is being removed simply be, for a bocce court, then I think that, and, and the tree does provide screening. If that is true, then I don't believe that that is a sufficient basis for the Heritage Tree removal under the ordinance. Additionally, I think that every reasonable effort should be made to preserve the, the trees adjacent to the driveway because the big picture is a lot of trees are suffering because of the, the drought and they are stressed. And so I think it's reasonable to take whatever precautions we can to ensure their survival. Thank you.
Could I ask, you know, Kristen, I don't recall a reference to Tree number twelve in the report.
No, I did not address it. I'm realizing that I completely missed it in the report and only addressed the trees in front of the addition.
And is that indeed a heritage sized tree?
It is indeed a heritage sized colesive oak of sixty inches, which would be, I think, a combined, combination of several limbs, most likely. And it's at the back end of the storage addition. So not removing the storage or not installing the storage there would likely remove the majority of the reason for taking that out, but we'd have to let the applicant speak to that.
Okay, we'll, we'll get back to the applicant after we've heard from the, the other members of the public. So if I could, if I could move on to Amy Bruger, I hope I have not mangled your name.
Okay, Amy, you've been allowed to talk.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yeah.
Well, hello, and thank you to the commission and to Kristen Tyke for your thoughtful review and consideration of this project. I'm Amy Bruger and I'm here with my husband, Bill. We are the previous owners of the Murray House and at Nine Murray Green. And we can attest to the urgency of getting this project underway as the home is in very fragile condition. We're here to express our full support and enthusiasm for the restoration and beautification of the Murray House, now the Woo residence. We're really grateful for the thoughtful design of the home, including the form and function and the care and consideration that they've given to the historic element and the importance of this Larkspur gem and bringing it back to life. The Woo's and Jared Polsky's team have shown incredible love for this property and we've been really inspired by that. Their generosity and neighborly spirit is a gift to the community and we're really thankful for that. We're in full support and we're here to just cheer on everyone who's working to preserve this charming old home for the Woo's to raise their family and also for the value and beauty that it brings to the neighborhood and all who appreciate and admire beautiful buildings with rich pasts and in this case, promising futures. We know there are numerous challenges taking on such a grand project and we're so grateful that the Woo's have maintained such grace, optimism and spirit of community throughout. You know, in addition, it's just the plans are incredibly beautiful and we're so excited to see it come to fruition. So, thank you.
Thank you very much. I'd like to move on to Tim Beal, if I could.
You know, you've been allowed to talk.
Yes, hello. Can you guys hear me?
With Tim.
Yes, hi, my name is Tim Beal. I'm at ninety-nine two lane in Hellview. I just want to echo the other neighbors that have also my enthusiastic support for this project as well. The Woo's have done everything that had been asked of them and, and the many reviews. And I just think that this, I just want to echo the exact stuff that this has had and I will continue to support them in anything that they do and welcome it to the neighborhood here in Larkspur. So thank you for your time and all that you do for our community and the staff for making sure that our community stays the way that it is. But I fully support and echo all the positive things about this project and to be able to save a historical site that without this work probably will not happen. So thank you for your time and consideration and letting us speak at this meeting.
Thank, thank you for your comments. Appreciate that. Okay, I see Mr. Holmes's hand is still raised. James, did you have something you wanted to add?
No, no, thank you, Mr. Chairman. I, I, if it was raised, that was a miss, miss, mistake.
That's, that's quite all right. And, you know, Jared, I see your hand is now down. Did, did you wish to speak again? And I think Kristen, there we go.
There we go. Jared, you're allowed to talk.
She doesn't say so.
Try it again.
Here we go.
There we go.
Thank you. Just wanted to briefly talk about two things. First of all, the driveway. We changed the design of the driveway in December with Dr. June to make sure that the root roots would not be impacted by the driveway. It is really the only place to park on this side. You can't park on the road as Ms. Daddell's attorney mentioned, that's a private road. And it's going to be almost, it's going to be difficult to park in the drive, in the garage. So we feel that's an important part of the design. However, we're happy to give up the storage shed at the back of the garage to preserve his, Heritage Tree number twelve. That, that storage was a vestige of an earlier design before we were requesting the variance to enclose the carport. So, so if, if, if that's, that's okay with everybody, we were happy to make that condition of approval to move, to remove the storage at the back of the garage and try to save, save the historic, excuse me, the Heritage Tree number twelve.
Okay, well, thank, thank you very much for that.
Can I also add something about from our, our best report from Dr. Julen? We just pulled up his report that he sent to, that he distributed when he did his survey of the property. And in point number nine in there, Kristen, I don't know if you have this or not, but there is a specific sentence where he says that fill is expected to be used to construct the driveway near trees one, two, and three and should not cause significant damage to the roots there. So I just wanted to add that just for context.
Okay, thank you very much. Great. I see no further hands raised. So with that, I'm going to close the public meeting and bring it back to the commission for deliberation. And I will start with Brock this time around.
Thank you, Daniel. I know this house pretty well, actually, and I am just tickled that somebody would, would tackle what's a, a huge project and I think Jared's done an amazingly good job of, of bringing new and, and old together and, and getting through the heritage process, which is arduous at best. I'm assuming that the garage, because somebody else asked this, would have, would be, because it's within three feet of the property line, Kristen, is that right? So it would be fireproof anyway on that, on that side and
It will also have sprinklers.
Yeah, yeah. So I think it's a, I think it's a great project and I would, I would totally support it.
Thank you very much. Laura.
I, I would echo that. I think it's a great project, too. I, I think it's terrific that a family is making the investment in a historic house and doing it so thoughtfully. And I applaud getting through the preservation board multiple times and all the iterations that had to go through with the historic architect. I also think it's actually quite clever to reuse the cottage in the garage so that it will look sort of like the cottage, but have a function. So I, I, I actually think it's, it's a terrific project. My only concern really was the trees. And just it's hard for me to really judge whether the driveway, the circular driveway should be narrowed or not to protect the trees and it would be great if it could be narrowed maybe at least a little bit around the trees. And if the only, if the main reason why it's as wide as it is is because of the parking spaces, then maybe that's not as critical and it could be narrowed. So anyway, I, I think it's a great project.
Thank you. Jeff?
I think it's a very exciting project. I think, I mean, I love historic houses and Larkspur's got so many nice ones. This is going to really be great to restore this place to what it once, you know, was and then, and then some. I like the, again, like Laura says, I like, and, and Brock says, I like the idea of reusing the cottage to make something functional. I'm glad that they will allow that Heritage Tree to stay number twelve. I think if the Arborist report indicated that they could build the driveway in such a way as to maximize the ability of the trees to survive because clearly that's part of the property that makes it historic, even though, you know, the, the trees aren't as old as the house. I think it's, I still, I think it's, that'd be great. And I trust, you know, the, the Arborists to make those recommendations. So I fully support this.
Thank you very much. I guess I'm going to echo everybody else. I mean, this is, this is, you know, quite remarkable. And certainly, a, and also, you know, want to extend special thanks to, you know, Kristen for, you know, this kind of work, which is, which is a lot. And, and extremely well done. And I, I, I see, you know, I, I can be, you know, quite enthusiastic about this. I think it's really in compliance with everything that requires compliance, maybe with the possible exception of the, of the driveway. I would, I would sort of put in a request to, to, to the applicant and to, and to Jared that they at least consider, you know, some narrowing of the driveway to, again, you know, maximize whatever protection might be available for those trees. But I, I don't know if, I don't know if I would necessarily support that as a condition of approval, but rather taken on, on good faith, given that there is an Arborist report that says the trees in fact can survive. I've got no, no issue with the, with the garage. Hummers have sort of fallen out of favor, so I think eleven feet will probably be able to park a reasonably sized car. And really, it's, it's, it's just wonderful to see a historic asset get, you know, preserved in this fashion. So I can make the findings as well. So with that, who got to do the motion? Actually, Jeff, well, you want to, you want to attempt a motion?
Could I ask for one small favor? I need a little clarity on Tree number twelve.
Oh, yes.
So I would, I would make a motion that we approve the project. And Dana, you liked the names and stuff of the actual, the actual number, but the, the motion as presented with the condition that Tree number twelve is preserved by eliminating the storage space in the back of the garage addition.
Okay.
I'll flag him up.
I, I did have a quick question for Kristen. When you say permits to allow removal of two sixty inch circumference, it, did that include that tree or not?
It did because it was two oaks. The other tree out front is not a heritage tree. One of them is a something gum tree.
So basically it's want to allow removal of one?
I just didn't specify that the one oak tree was in the back where the storage is.
Okay.
Okay, so we do have the motion in a second. All in favor, please hit aye. We will go through a roll call. Aye?
Aye. Aye.
Aye. And could we get a roll call?
Commissioner Kuntzler?
Aye.
Commissioner Wagstaff?
Aye.
Commissioner Swisher?
Aye.
Commissioner Tauber?
Aye.
And noting that Commissioner Chalmers is absent this evening, so we have four in favor. There is, since there has been a decision made, there is an appeal period. I guess it's ten, ten days to the city council for anybody who does object to our ruling. So thank you very much and thank you all for being here this evening. Okay. With that, we can move on to our business items, beginning with the approval of the minutes from our meeting in February twenty-second, twenty twenty-two. Would anyone care to make a motion?
I will have approval.
Could I get a second?
I will second it. Oops. I guess I'm not, I'm not muted.
That's okay, well.
So I'm still seconding.
Okay, and we're, we're still very appreciative of that. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And none opposed to Commissioner Chalmers's absence. I, I don't think we need a roll call on that one. Finally, planning commissioner reports. Does anybody have anything to report? Okay, well, I actually do. So my, my term is up on the first of July of this year. And after some soul searching, I've decided I will not ask for a new term. So I'll be leaving the commission on or about the first of July. We have a, a lot of deferred, you know, travel on three continents. That's, you know, it's actually been accumulated over the last, you know, two and some years, which would probably provoke quite a number of absences beginning, beginning sometime this summer. And, you know, there are other people in Larkspur who are equally committed as I am to civic services in this community. So I will be stepping, I will be stepping down. I will inform Natasha, you know, separately, since she's not here this evening. So that's my, that is my commission report for, you know, for this evening. And
So you'll step down effective July first?
Yeah, I'll step down effective July, July first. What I, what I will do or what, what the city manager is recommending to to the city council is that I remain on the, on the committee that is working on the housing element until the, until that is completed and submitted to the state. So you're not completely rid of me, but close.
Oh, if your term is up, mine must be almost up, too.
Yeah, so time to search your soul.
I got a few months to figure it out.
Yeah. Though, since, since I'm, I'm, I'm sharing this year, I thought it, it might be appropriate to give a, you know, a bit of notice. Okay, so with that, we have one final business item, which is adjournment. And if anybody were, care to propose such.
I will move that we adjourn. That's my big chance.
I will second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? None. Commissioner Chalmers absent. So, thank you all very much. You're adjourned.
Best of luck, Daniel, but we'll be talking before that.
Yeah, I mean, I, I'm, I'm still kind of around and
I'll see you walking the dog sometime.
Yeah, I'll be, also, the, the dog still's got, it still has to be walked.
Yeah. Yeah, there's this, I'm, I'm, I finally got three weeks off in July, which is like a, a once in a lifetime thing for me. So we're going to be, we'll be gone for three weeks in July, too.
Yeah, yeah, July itself tends to be not that much of an issue because, you know, with, with the Fourth of July, I mean, often what will happen is at least one of those meetings does get does get, you know, postponed. That happens actually pretty frequently.
We're going to be gone three weeks, leaving Monday, so.
Oh, wow. All right.
To see the grandson.
All right, congrats. Yeah.
Bye, y'all.
All right, take care, everybody.
Thank you very much, buddy. Good night.
Bye.
I'll just end it.